Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Virtual Lakewood City Council Meeting, Lakewood, Colorado, January 11th, 2021. For those tuning in tonight, our public comment line is 253-215-8782. Webinar ID is 953-1566-5659. You'll press pound after entering the webinar ID and then pound once more to join the meeting. Press star nine to request to speak and then star six to unmute. There'll be opportunities for public comment under general public comment, as well as resolutions on the consent agenda and second reading ordinances. So with that, Mr. Rowland, will you please read the role?
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Gutwine. Gutwine, sorry, we didn't hear you. Still don't hear you, but I see you're here. Bida.
Here.
Skilling.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Johnson.
I am here.
LeBure.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we're going to go and move into the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're going to have an extended moment of silence this evening and like to honor a couple folks. One is our former Lakewood Police Chief, Ron Burns, who passed away. And so we want to certainly have an opportunity to honor him. An incredible man, and Ms. Hodson will weigh in a little bit more in her report. And then also Officer Brian Sicknick, who lost his life at the Capitol this week. And certainly, our country has seen a lot of upheaval, not only this last week, but throughout all of 2020, and unfortunately, moving into 2021. So this is a great opportunity for us just to take a moment to reflect in any which way that we do, or however we do that, and remember those special folks, and remember that we are a wonderful nation, a great nation. And as evident by the folks that came back to work that night, the institutions are greater than the people, and those will go on. So with that, will you please join me in the pledge? And again, we'll remain silent. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, into this world with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. So as we move forward, just a couple of things I wanted to signal out to the community on the agenda. As has been come kind of the norm, unfortunately, we do have a motion to extend the emergency declaration, so we will move that up to just after the executive report. And then when you get to the consent agenda, Counselor Johnson has requested to move item 11, which has to do with, while it's just first reading, but it's the Westland Town Center Parking Lot, we'll be moving that to general business. And so when we get to that, she will make that, and then has an explanation under general business as to why. So, Mr. Clark, could you please read item four?
Item number four, Resolution 2021-2, Appointing the Mayor Pro Tem of the City Council of the City of Lakewood.
Okay, so this is a yearly thing that we do, and nominations can come from the floor. And I do have Counselor Franks' hand up, so I will go to Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Appreciate it. Well, first, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank those who have served as Mayor Pro Tem in the past. This council, especially since I've been on council, we've created more committees and commissions, and the amount of work that we all do has certainly, in my view, increased. And so I certainly wanted to acknowledge that it's for those who take this role on, it is another duty, and so I certainly appreciate that. This year, I do want to again nominate Counselor Dave Skilling for Mayor Pro Tem. I do believe he has a head and shoulders led above as far as executing the duties, ensuring good communications, and that good processes are followed. So I am honored to nominate Counselor Dave Skilling from the floor. Thanks.
Thank you. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, second from Counselor Harrison, a motion, a second. And if you could please mute yourselves, I don't have that ability, other than mute myself. So there's a motion and a second. So Counselors Bida and Johnson, your hands are up. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Well, first off, I couldn't agree more with Counselor Franks. I think that Counselor Skilling has done a very fine job being the Mayor Pro Tem and executing that, all of his responsibilities extremely well. It is a position that you learn a lot of leadership through serving in that. I would just like to say a few comments about things, and Counselor Skilling understands where I'm coming from, so this is not new information to him. We have three counselors on this council who are termed out in three years. This position is the type of position that everybody should have an opportunity to serve in and to learn how to be a leader, to take those skills back into your community. If this motion goes through, and it likely will, this will give us, and frankly, this is not something that I get into because it's just not my style. But we will have had four male Pro Tems, Mayor Pro Tems. We have an equal amount of female counselors, and the counselors who are going to be termed out in three years are females. If they do not have an opportunity, the three of them, to start to cycle in this position, they are not going to have the opportunity to learn this and to fulfill that leadership role. On a personal level, I have to question, to be honest with you, having a Mayor Pro Tem who is going to be running for office in the same year. The public perception is not good. I think that it's something that has come up in some of the meetings regarding Mayor Pro Tem. I don't think there was ever any kind of a decision made for that. But this position was never designed to catapult somebody politically. It was to be the side person for the mayor, to be there when the mayor could not be, and also to learn leadership skills. When I was reading through the agenda tonight, there were a few things that kind of stood out, and it's part of the language of the charter. The term is for one year. You are selected for a term, and the charter does not offer alternatives. So I think that as we go forward with this, we really need to, as a council, pay attention to some of the things that we are deciding and doing. Again, I think that Counselor Skilling has done a very fine job, and this is not about him personally. And I've reached out to him. He knows how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And I would just ask, when you're done, please lower, yeah, thank you, please lower your hands, because I do not have that ability either. Counselor Bida?
Thank you, Mayor. Am I coming through okay?
Loud and clear.
Good. Thank you. I agree with my co-counselor, Johnson, on this. I do think, first of all, I want to thank Counselor Skilling for what the job he has done in the last year. He's put in some extraordinary effort, and I know some extraordinary time in his duties as Mayor Pro Tem. And I think he's done a great job, and I really appreciate it, and I know we all do. But I have to also agree that this is a position that should be rotated around with other counselors. It's a leadership position. It's not just an assistant where you just kind of show up if the mayor can't make it. I don't see it that way at all. In fact, I see it as a, you know, it's an appointment by this council. The mayor is elected by the people, but Mayor Pro Tem is appointed by this council, and they're kind of a representative of all of us. And I see it as a standalone position where they should be able to, and should use it as a, you know, as a way to get out in the community and find out what our community needs, and talk to them about what's going on with council, and being sort of an ambassador for our council. And, you know, it's a standalone. They don't have to defer to anybody or ask for permission. So it's a leadership position. I think it's important for it to, for us to see some diversity in that position, so that, you know, different points of view, different backgrounds are represented in that leadership position. We've had been fortunate, since I've been on council, we've had three very good Mayor Pro Tems in the last, and this, and now it'll be the fourth year. If we have another male or another man on Mayor Pro Tem, and I do think it's time for one of our, one of my women colleagues, they have, I have seen my colleagues grow so much since I've been on council in their leadership abilities, in their maturity, in their approach to the issues. And I just think that we need, we need one of them now to step up, if it's at all possible, and take on this position. And I, and I note that we're in contentious times, we all know that, and I'm not going to get into all that. But because we're in those kinds of times, it's even more important for us to have a leadership at the highest level that has a calming effect, that has a conciliatory approach in effect, to keep, you know, keep us moving in the right direction, keep the acrimony down, and keep the, you know, all of the friction that is bound to occur in a council like ours, to keep that to a minimum and show our constituents that, you know, we're there to serve them, first and foremost. So I would really like to see one of our, one of our ladies step up on this, and I would be more than willing to support them. Thank you.
Okay, so just a reminder, we have a motion, a second, so we get folks to speak to the motion, please. Counselor LeBure?
Well, I was just gonna echo the same things that Counselor Bida and Counselor Johnson said. I think Counselor Skilling has done an excellent job. I think he's a great leader. He's taken a lot of arrows, a lot of hits for playing a very important leadership role, I think, in the last year. And he's done a fantastic job, and I thank him for all that he's done. But I just wanted to echo that I agree a lot with what Counselor Bida and Johnson have said. Be great to have some women leadership as well. I was happy to support Counselor Gutwine a few years ago, and I was happy to support Counselor Vincent last year. And I hope, you know, if neither one of them are running this time, I hope that next year we'll see them running for the position. So thanks for everybody on this council for all that everyone does. And thanks for Skilling for stepping up again this year.
Thank you. So I'll just speak to the motion, and as somebody that has had the opportunity to work a lot this year with Mayor Pro Tem Skilling, it certainly has been something that's been very helpful. And when I heard a lot of folks describe what you look for in a Mayor Pro Tem, you absolutely nailed what Counselor Skilling, Mayor Pro Tem Skilling's brought to the table. And the heavy lift throughout the year, and, you know, not only being Mayor Pro Tem, but being the head of development dialogue, and taking on some of the most challenging conversations this council has had, and been able to bring some sorts of cohesion and a willingness for folks to come together. So I'm certainly willing to support the Mayor Pro Tem going forward. It's tough, because I do have friends on this group that I've nominated in the past, and who are just as capable, and went through a really ugly conversation. And so I'm glad to see some folks willing to say that these folks are worthy, because they are worthy, and there's a lot of worthy people on this group. And so, you know, there wasn't a lot of opportunity to stand in, because we've been closed down and there weren't events, but it's more than just events. And it's folks that are willing to get in there and really put the time and energy in. And so I am grateful for the service, and I hope that this does pass going forward, and would be better for another year with you in this role. Counselor Harrison?
Thank you. I would echo what everybody else has said, Dave. I think that you've done a tremendous job, but I'm going to put you on the spot, and I'm going to ask you to think about a couple of things. You know what kind of weight Pro Tem position has. You also know what kind of weight you carry with the development dialogue. If, and I'm not going to put you on the spot about running again, but if you're going to add that one to your load for 2021, that's going to be a really big load that you're carrying. I want you to really think about that. And I don't, it's not that I don't believe that you can't do it, because I think you can, but that's really stretching your free hours pretty thin. And I know you're, you know, your family is very important to you. So can I give you that thought and let you think about it for a moment? And then maybe I'd like to hear from you, why do you want? And then maybe I'd like to hear from you, why do you want to stick your hand in the meat grinder again?
Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Mayor Pro Tem, your hand is up, so please.
I was asked, so I am not going to ever be shy. You know me to be the shy type and all. So leading up to this, you know, I think we've accomplished a lot of what we were hoping to accomplish when I first run for pro tem last year. And I've never viewed this as the stand-in role. It's never been, I've never actually viewed it as the backup mayor, because I know that Adam is there a lot and does a lot of those events, and he enjoys them. I think I've only even pre-virus, I think I had done maybe one event or something. But I think most of what it is is the behind-the-scenes collaboration that we've tried to have and trying to reach out to every counselor. I think I have good relationships with everybody. And we've gone through some difficult periods, and yes, I have taken a lot of arrows on that. But I think without going through that, I think it may have been worse in some respects. There's a lot of what we're trying to do is head off the problems before they arise, see where people's consternation is, and address it. And I talk to everybody a lot. I understand the workload, and I appreciate that, and it is a lot of work. But a lot of what I do and still trying to do as far as bringing everybody together and working better as a group together, I don't really want to do this job as even a city councilor if you dread coming into a meeting and if everybody is, you know, taking sides, whatever it is. You know, we've had some issues in the past, and that's not fun for everybody. We've all sat here and said that, that hey, we need to change, we need to get better. And I think we're on that trajectory to get better. So yes, some of it is selfishness in that I want to be a big reason of why we get along better and why we move forward, and that makes my job more enjoyable coming to this job, if that makes any sense. It may not, but it's more just trying to continue on the same. So I appreciate what everybody has said, and I appreciate that folks have supported me through the past year. Hopefully this January will be easier than last January, because I would really like to move on from last January. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Bida?
Just one thing, Mayor. Are you going to ask if there are any other nominations?
No, because this was the motion, and the second was for Mayor Pro Tem Skilling at this point.
But Mr. Mayor, isn't that just tantamount to a nomination of him for the position? And normally, the process we follow would be we would take any other nominations that would, may want to run for the position.
Well, we certainly would, if this fails.
Well, then, I'm questioning whether this is the proper procedure for the appointment of our mayor pro tem. It seems to me it ought to be a nomination and a vote, not a motion.
Well, that's what we're doing, is a nomination and a vote.
Well, what I'm saying is I'm not sure that's the right procedure for doing that, because then it precludes anyone else from being given an opportunity to put their hat in the ring. And I'm not sure this is the right procedure. So I think this is point of order. I think this is the wrong procedure. I think the motion should be withdrawn, and we should go to the normal process, which is nominations as opposed to a motion.
Well, I think at the same thing that if, I mean, this is how we've done it in the past. And so the nomination would be the same thing. If this, if somebody was nominated and failed, then we'd go on to the next person. So either way, we have to take a vote as to the person who's been nominated with a motion and a second.
But Mr. Mayor, the thing is with a nomination, then you open the nominations, and you allow anyone else who is also wants to nominate someone. So you have, you may have more than one candidate, and then you'll vote on the candidates. You know, candidate one, candidate two. That's the way it's always done. This idea of a motion, what it does is it precludes anybody else from throwing their hat in the ring. It closes, slams the door. And I'm opposed to that. I think the procedure is wrong, and I would challenge it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that feedback. And barring other ways of how we've done this in the past, I don't have an idea of how to go about undoing this. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, and it was legally done via our processes. So Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
I think that probably to address Counselor Bida's point, you would just have whatever nominations happen up front. And then that way, you know who you're, so if there were three folks that were being nominated and your candidate comes up, you would vote for them, obviously you would vote against a candidate that was up. So I think the point would be, okay, here's your universe of nominations. Here are the people that are involved. So you know that you're voting for candidate one or candidate two. So if you don't vote for candidate one, you're going to vote for candidate two. So I think that's fair to do it that way. I think that's an appropriate way, especially based on the conversations that we're hearing. Just if there are other nominations that folks want to accept, let's do that, and then we can just go through it however you'd like.
I'll withdraw my second.
So Counselor Franks, you are the motion-maker. Your hands up.
Well, what I wanted to say is I didn't know if we could just, if there was someone else who wanted to, as part of the discussion, could certainly, I just hadn't heard from anyone else that was, you know, we've had this open for weeks. No one else has contacted me to, so I guess, you know, certainly if someone wants to announce that. But I still think that since we had the motion and the second, I'm not withdrawing my motion. But certainly if someone wants to raise their hand and say that they're, you know, certainly to make themselves known. But again, this has been known for weeks, and no one's reached out to me to say that they were interested, so I didn't have the benefit of that consideration. But certainly, I would like to keep my motion or my nomination motion on the table, but...
All right, so now I'm in a Robert's Rules dilemma, so I'm going to have to refer to Mr. Graham. So we had a motion and a second, and the second was withdrawn. And the original motion maker does not want to withdraw the original motion.
So in a situation like this, you would ask for a second again and see if you get another second?
Okay. So the original motion maker was Counselor Franks? And is there a second to her original motion of nominating Counselor Skilling for mayor pro tem? And so I would second that.
I would, okay.
So it looks like Counselor Vincent was going to second that as well. Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Now, if there's anybody, so this is going a little bit outside the realm because this is speaking against, this is something beyond the motion that is on the table. But for the openness of this council, is there somebody else who would like to be considered for this role? And if so, do they accept that? Counselor Johnson, your hand is up.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Counselor Gutwine. She had wanted to be in this position a year or two ago, and it didn't work out. She has grown a great deal. I think being mayor pro tem at this time would help her with her leadership ability. And again, we have three women, and I really don't like to get into this as being a male female issue, but we have three councilors on here, and I'm talking.
No, I'm going to limit the discussion on it, because there is a motion and a second. You did nominate Counselor Gutwine, and that's fine. I don't, we have to do with the original motion. I'm giving a little bit of leeway, so I'm not going to go into all of this right now with the motion and the second. There was a second nomination, and that was for Counselor Gutwine, and that is up to her to accept that or not.
Well, I would second the nomination.
It wasn't a nomination.
No, you can't second that, sorry.
Well, wait, there was a nomination made. It requires a second. You just took a second on the, you just took a second on the other nomination. Why isn't it appropriate here?
Because the second was done on the original motion, which is the dominating motion that is on the floor. Technically, there should be no talk other than just this. But because the motion maker said that she'd be welcome to hear if anybody else would be willing to do this, I allowed for somebody else to ask. Not, this isn't a nomination. This is simply to say so that when this vote takes place on the motion and the second on Counselor Skilling, people have an idea that somebody else would like to run. Now, clearly, this wasn't the cleanest of processes, but this is what we're left with, and this is the cleanest that we can get through. So Counselor Gutwine, I know that kind of puts you on the spot, and if you're not prepared to answer, I do. I do have our motion makers hand up too, if you need to.
Okay, I'll wait, and then I'll speak afterwards. Thank you.
Counselor Franks? Okay, never mind.
I'm fine. I was just wanting to know if she was going to accept the, that way it was clear for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. And that's what we're going to get to.
I just really, really want to thank Counselor Johnson and Counselor Bida for nominating me. I think that, honestly, I think that really says a lot. Just given all of our background and all of our history, and I really, in my heart, agree with you about just giving folks a shot. And it also gives our, our communities that we represent, and our different communities that we represent, you know, it elevates their position as well. And I, so I would, that means so much to me that you would nominate me. I am, what I would really love is to see us have an opportunity to unanimously support someone. And I don't think that we're going to get to that place. That's unfortunate. And I had not reached out, as Counselor Franks mentioned, I had not intended to run for mayor pro tem this year. And so I think that at this time, I will not accept the nomination. And I hope that moving forward, we will be able to elevate the female leaders and give other people a chance. Thank you for your support, and that this is a really difficult, really difficult situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I do not see any more hands up and don't see any more folks with nominations. I'm going to try to just go as slow as I can to make sure that I don't miss anything. Counselor Abel, your hand is up.
Yes, I don't have a nomination. I do have a comment. Counselor Gutwine just showed a great deal of class and certainly would deserve the recognition for that, if nothing else. I think she's matured into the role, but I support Counselor Skilling. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Gutwine, for being so gracious.
Great. Okay, a motion and a second. And this, the motion on the floor is the original one for Counselor Skilling to serve as mayor pro tem. So please cast your votes. Counselor Springsteen, I can't see your vote. Okay, and that passes 10 ayes and zero nays. Is that correct? The nay being Counselor Johnson. Okay, all right. Next up, we have public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that do not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that all persons calling in observe the same decorum of the city council meeting held in person. Your participation code or call in tonight is 1-253-215-8782. With the web ID 95315665659, you'll press pound after that, and then pound once more to join the meeting. Star nine to request to speak, star six to unmute. Again, this is general public comment. Three minutes if you give us your name and address, and I will give you a 30-second warning. And it sounds like I've had some feedback too, that maybe a 10-second is helpful for folks as well. So I'll go ahead and do that. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody for general public comment?
Yes, we have a phone number ending 0323.
All right. Good evening, caller ending in 0323. If you please give us your name and address or name and ward, we'll start your three minutes. If you need to press star six to unmute, that'll unmute you. Caller ending in 0323, we see you. So you're in the meeting. So if you press star six, you can unmute, and we'll begin your time.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Mace. Go ahead.
First off, I have a question for one of the council members. And Mayor, I would like to ask that question.
Please.
Counselor Charlie Abel, did you get my message this afternoon that I left you?
So Mr. Mace, please continue your comments, and we can come back after public comment, please.
Okay, my comment is also, Mayor, everything that Counselor Springsteen has told you guys, everything that Counselor Springsteen's told you guys about our fire department is true. I have literally seen them giving out the the GHB drug on, which is the date rape drug. And I have literally seen it happen face to face. If you guys don't want to do an investigation on this, I will. And there's my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mace, thank you very much, sir. All right, Mr. Rome, do we have anybody else signed up for public comment?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay. All right. Counselor Abel, do you want to address that quick, um, question from Mr. Mace?
I do. Mr. Mace, I did not get your message this afternoon. Was it email, uh, telephone? If so, which telephone? And I would like to apologize that I didn't get it, but this has been a very busy day for all of us. So, uh, please give me a call tomorrow morning or when this is over tonight. Whatever time it is, I'll be happy to address your, uh, concerns.
Thank you, Counselor. He's not on the line anymore, so hopefully.
He's probably listening, though.
Yep. Hopefully you heard that, Mr. Mace, so please reach back out to Counselor Abel. All right. Next up, we have the executive report, Ms. Hodson.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Um, let me start with some kind of easy, and then I've got some more in-depth information. First of all, your new city attorney, um, Allison McKinney Brown, her start date is next Tuesday. So it's January nineteenth. Um, remember, you don't have a council meeting next Monday. Um, so you'll get to meet her in person at the following council meeting, so I look forward to that. So you have been in the conversations regarding the porch light project, and you know that porch light. Remember, um, DA Pete Weir came and spoke to the city council probably, gosh, I think it was even before COVID, was it? Because I think he and his team came in person. Well, there have been a lot of hurdles um, for them setting up the facility at Eighth and Quail. And some of those hurdles were issues with water pipe and construction delays, et cetera. But I'm excited to announce that currently furniture is being moved in, um, and the IT equipment is being installed. And it looks like, it looks like we hope that we're gonna be able to open to the public starting February eighth, which is really good news for our families who are dealing with, um, just stressful situations. As you know, operations are limited initially due to COVID. Um, but opening the doors is a, is a big, um, a big event for us, and we're excited that we're gonna be able to help the victims of domestic violence in our community. So that's a, oh, deep exhale. Um, also, I sent you an email from the Jefferson County Communications Team, and I wanted to mention this. They have started something called Notify Me, and this will be important for your constituents to know about. Um, if you're like me, you hear questions, um, constantly about COVID nineteen and the cases, and how do I get vaccinated, and where do I get it, and what are, what are those, um, hierarchy of rules? So it looks like they're setting up a system that you will be notified if you signed up, sign up for notification. So it's the COVID nineteen section of Jeffco.us website. You'll be able to find it, and if you don't go, if, if you're having any trouble, go to Lakewood.org and our coronavirus, um, area, and you'll be able to link directly to the Jeffco site. So more information should be forthcoming, but I think that's really good news. We have, as you might remember, if you've been around a while, we have a hazard mitigation plan that needs to be updated every five years, and here we are, we're there again. So the hazard mitigation plan is currently being updated in Jefferson County. The plan identifies hazards that the city is susceptible to and mitigation actions that'll reduce that risk and the loss associated with such. The plan is updated every five years, first approved by FEMA, and then it comes to city council for approval. And we're estimating that that'll happen around July of twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one, can you believe that? Um, you know, public input and information and participation is critical for this process. So there will be, the first public meeting is coming up, it's January fourteenth, and there's a survey involved to start to really engage citizens about this whole process. So you'll be getting an email from Jesse Miller, who you've met before, he's our emergency manager, and he'll do a follow-up with more detail, but I just wanted to give the heads up on the hazard mitigation plan that's underway. And finally, on the lighter side, I was really excited to hear this, and I think you will too. Because our community and our whole region, the citizens just adore the open spaces that, that are provided throughout this area. Um, whenever you have a lot of people who are, uh, visiting the open space, it's inevitable to have conflict. And it looks like there's this, this, um, consortium that's come together, it's Boulder Open Space and Mountain Parks, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, and Jefferson County Open Space. They are going, they're, um, conducting a big research project that is, let me get my glasses. It's a two-year study to evaluate the effectiveness of existing trail courtesy signs and to develop messaging that, based on visitor feedback and field observations, is the most effective. So we're gonna be, um, a stakeholder, although we're not contributing financially, we're really gonna watch, watch, um, how that process goes, so there may be some really good efforts that they are recommending that we can implement in our open spaces. So I was excited to hear that, that somebody's really looking at trail conflicts. And what's the best way, what are the best ways to try to kind of mitigate some of the conflict that we see on our trails? Um, okay, last week, Counselor, uh, Labure talked about the Dr. Cog grant, do you remember that? And, uh, so I said I would talk about some details about that, um, specific project. And as it relates to your last plant, annual planning session, transportation was one of your, um, priorities, so this really fits in. We have been granted a ten million dollar grant, ten million dollars toward a twelve million dollar project on for, and it's called the Colfax Safety Project from Wadsworth to Sheridan. So I've learned, um, that it's really important to describe the, what the need is before you talk about what the solutions are. And I think I neglected to do that at our last meetings. So let me talk about the need. Did you know that the highest concentration of traffic-related injuries and deaths in Lakewood occur on this site? In, in this area. And in the recent, in the most recent six years, we have had three hundred and twelve serious injuries and eight fatalities. And this is on Colfax from Wadsworth to Sheridan. We've had pedestrians or bicyclists were eighty-one of the three hundred and twelve serious injuries and six of the eight deaths. The pedestrian-involved crashes are primarily at night and involve impaired pedestrians. And sidewalks in this area, area are generally narrow and in poor condition or absent. So those are the conditions that, that we're dealing with, that it became really clear that we've got to do something about this. So we applied for this grant, and I believe this is one of the largest grants ever to be awarded, and it's ten million from Dr. Cog. And here are the char, the key characteristics of this project. One, transform the underutilized third travel lane from Teller to Sheridan Boulevard into buffered, well-lit sidewalks. Two, add bus stop pullout, pullouts adjacent to the driving lanes for faster unloading of patrons in brighter passenger waiting areas and to reduce impacts of bus stops on through lane traffic. Three, create buffers between vehicle traffic and pedestrians to guide pedestrians to safer crossing locations. Four, utilize innovative design elements to guide pedestrians to well-lit, protected Colfax Street crossings. Five, incorporate landscaping, artistic and placemaking elements into buffers and guidance elements. Won't that be nice to have something a little nicer, uh, visibly, visually, I mean? Provide well-lit, safe, safer pedestrian median crossing refuge areas. Add six new pedestrian signal crossing locations and one new vehicle traffic signal at Dupu. Eight, improve directional and informational signs for pedestrians and motorists. Nine, add technology to detect pedestrians that have entered the street unlawfully and activate warning signs for the, for the motorists. And finally, improve intersections for safer turns onto West Colfax Avenue. On December sixteenth, twenty twenty, um, Dr. Cog, which is Denver Regional Council of Governments, approved a ten million dollar grant from the Safer Main Streets Initiative. And the city's required two million dollar match will most likely come from our taper proceeds, depends on, um, how this, those come in at the end of the year. So we're really excited about that, and I want to call out three specific departments who have worked really hard on this grant. And that is from Public Works, Matt Duncan, he's a wizard with traffic engineering. From planning, Roger Waddnell, who you all know, and he has worked for the city for very long. And finally, from the police department, Sergeant Brian Lovejoy, who's really an expert as it relates to, um, traffic issues and as they intersect with police issues. So, um, we also had the whole team of economic development. So that's our internal team, we work with CDA and RTD and a whole lot of other stakeholders. And we're just delighted about this particular grant, and congratulations to those folks who worked really hard to get it. Um, construction is currently anticipated to start in two thousand twenty-two, which, believe this, that's only next year. Okay, so thank you for letting me tell you that. Oh, 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 except we're gonna start a pretty thorough public information process for this project, and it's gonna start at the end of February or early March. So you'll hear more about this, and please encourage, uh, whoever, everyone in the community to participate in those conversations. I think it'll be really beneficial to have as many of our constituents get involved in that public information. And imagine in a couple of years, we'll have a much safer area, um, along Colfax, so that's something that we can really look forward to. And finally, on a really sad note, as the mayor indicated, on, um, on January second, we lost a really good man, and that was Ron Burns. He was a police chief. I had the pleasure of working side by side with him as a department head during that time. He came to the, to the Lakewood Police Department in two thousand and one and worked, um, as a chief for six years. He reinforced the high standards of Lakewood Police Department's mission to serve and protect with integrity, intelligence, and initiative. He always led by example, and I know that to be true. His forward thinking and willingness to listen to the community quickly earned him the loyalty, respect, and admiration of those who worked with him. His legacy will include an uncompromising pledge to the highest standards of integrity, professionalism, outstanding leadership, and an unfailing loyalty and commitment to serving the citizens of Lakewood. He was a charismatic and a humble man. Um, and our organization was better because of him. We're really gonna miss him, and, and our hearts go out to Nancy, his, his precious wife, and, and his family. Um, so this is a real unfortunate loss for us as a community, and, um, we wish he, him well. Rest in peace, Ron. So thanks. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Hodson. All right, so I'll now go to the emergency declaration. And, uh, as we proceed with this, just a reminder to the community, we've essentially been in this phase since March. And, um, as you know, things continue to change. Um, opportunities continue to arise that may need emergency action or may not. Um, what we're seeing also in other communities is, is kind of a wildfire of this, uh, crazy disease that's really affecting a lot of people. So, um, there may be more dollars that come in, there may not, but this allows us in many ways to strike fast. And certainly has been used very limited or in a very limited, limited, limited capacity, but it's important to continue as the state of Colorado continues to be in a state of emergency. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem, Skilling, for a motion.
I move to extend the declaration of disaster in the city of Lakewood, Colorado, resulting from coronavirus COVID nineteen pandemic pursuant to section one point two seven of the Lakewood Municipal Code, originally declared by proclamation of the Lakewood City Manager on March seventeenth, twenty twenty, extended by majority vote of the city council on multiple occasions, and by this motion, extended again until January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, unless earlier extended or terminated by the city council.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second on the declaration. Any questions? All right. Seeing none, please cast your votes. That passes ten ayes and zero nays. Is that correct? Yep. Ten ayes, zero, uh, ten ayes, one nay, sorry. One nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Before I go to that, I also want to mention that we did receive public comment on Lakewood Speaks, so I want to acknowledge that as well and thank the community for weighing in there. Um, the use of the consent agenda has been made to expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. And first reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for publication and setting of second reading. Lost my script. No public comments will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the date set tonight by city council. Any council member may request an item on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion and action under general business. So just a point of clarification, Mr. Rome, you are, uh, learning with us as we go. Normally, I think we would read this all in and then we would poll. If it's easier to read in without polling and just acknowledging, I can call on Counselor Johnson to just push it to general business. I don't know. Um, we certainly welcome your feedback on that, if you have any, or if either way, we'll roll with how we normally do it.
Uh, yeah, I think I should read it all in and then you motion to.
Okay.
If that works for you.
Great. So I ask that you please read the consent agenda into the record.
Item seven, resolution twenty twenty-one dash three, appointing a member to the budget and audit board. Item eight, resolution twenty twenty-one dash four, appointing and reappointing members to the Lakewood Advisory Committee. Item nine, resolution twenty twenty-one dash five, designating the public place for posting notices of public meetings during twenty twenty-one pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four zero two. Item ten is ordinance zero twenty twenty-one dash one, modification to official development plan to legislatively rezoned land located at twenty-three oh one South McIntyre Street, Lakewood, Colorado, eight zero four six five, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. Item eleven, ordinance O dash twenty twenty-one dash two, authorizing the sale of the Westland Town Center parking lot in accordance with that certain option contract entered into as of June sixteen, nineteen ninety-two, between the city of Lakewood and the owners of the Westland Mall, Westland Town Center. And item twelve, approving the minutes of city council meetings of August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, and October twelfth, twenty twenty.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to poll or move, if you will, item eleven, ordinance twenty dash, or zero twenty twenty-one two regarding the, uh, sale of the Westland Town Center to general business, at which time I will explain the reason for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will poll item eleven. So now I will open up the, uh, public comment portion for the resolutions, uh, twenty-one dash three dash four dash five. Uh, Mr. Rome, do we have anybody who would like to speak on the consent agenda? If you do wish to speak on the consent agenda, okay, looks like you're coming in.
Hello?
All right, caller ending in five three three three. This is the consent agenda. Would like to speak, please give us your name and address or ward, and we'll begin your three minutes.
Sure, this is, uh, Marie Vener in Ward five, and, um, thank you all for your service. Um, I, I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it. I can be very brief. I am here to ask you to make sustainability work a serious priority for the city in 2021. Some of you know I had the privilege of accompanying high school students who organized and wanted to meet with the mayor and staff years ago.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt. So this is just public comment pertaining to the three resolutions, items three, four, and five? Is this just a general public comment statement?
It is. Is this the wrong time?
Yeah, unfortunately, we're past general public comment.
I was wondering why I wasn't called on for that earlier. I've been here since the start.
Okay, so Mr. Rome and I, there was only one hand up at that point, and that was Mr. Mace?
Oh, I'm just on the phone.
Certainly, and that's how we call on you with your hand up?
Okay, I had done star nine to try to raise my hand. I think that's how I'm supposed to do it. But that's, I've been waiting, but I can, this last hour, but I'll just put it in via email if it's out of order at this point.
I appreciate that. I try to keep this kind of even for everybody. And we have seen some comments come through on Lakewood Speaks about sustainability. And so he can weigh in with the retreat coming up at his time.
Yeah, I imagine there are others who encountered the same problem I did this evening, like called in and did star nine to try to get in the queue, who also weren't called on. So just FYI.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And just for the record, there were only two callers in the queue. And again, Mr. Mace had his hand up. All right, so if there's nobody else in the queue, I will close public comment on the consent agenda. I would like to turn it over to our, actually, let's have a motion. We'll do a motion in a second, and then the chair of our screening committee, if you'd like to weigh in on our three resolutions, would be fantastic.
Mayor, I move for the acceptance of the minutes of city council. Order all ordinances introduced on first reading, except for those pulled to general business, to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing set for the date included in the ordinance and for the adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda, items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Right, a motion of second. And forgive me, is Counselor Abel or Counselor Franks? Counselor Abel, okay, sorry about that. Counselor Abel, you're on mute.
There we go. First, I'd like to thank members of the screening committee. Councilman Bita, Councilwoman Franks, Councilwoman Vincent, and Councilwoman Bootline. We've all been together on the screening committee again this year. And I was fortunate enough to serve as chairman. Soon, we will be reorganizing the committee, and it will be someone else's turn. But we have had very cordial discussions, very in-depth discussions about qualifications. And we have had, and application after application, we've been impressed with the amount of knowledge, specialized knowledge also, that our Lakewood community members possess. So we have been able to add to the diversity of our committees. And it has been a pleasure working with you folks, and I want to thank you very much. You make it easy to be chairman. And whoever wants the reins next, believe me, the membership makes it an easy job. With that said, we are nominating an item number seven for the Budget and Audit Committee, Marlon McDaniel. You want me to run through the others in LAC as well?
Yeah, please do.
Okay. For appointments and reappointments, we have, goodness, five reappointments for the Lakewood Advisory Commission. These folks do hard work, a lot of work, and they're very innovative folks. So we're renominating Roger Freeman, Andrea Getz, I'm sorry, Gelfuso Getz, Robert Gerza, Kate and Kate McBride, and Chris Rivard. A new appointment will be, if accepted by our council, will be Diane Rhodes. All of them Lakewood residents, very eager and very interested in volunteering for our city. That's us, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. And so we do have a motion in a second. And so let's take a vote, and we'll give you a virtual kind of round of applause because we certainly appreciate your time and commitment. You're willing to serve on these important committees that are a critical part of what we do and allowing us to do our job. So motion of second on the resolutions. Please cast your votes. That looks like that passes 11 ayes and zero nays. So we would like to welcome you all and give you a virtual round of applause for your willingness to serve your community. Thank you very much. That was kind of fun. Nice. Got to take the good stuff when you can. Okay, so Mr. Clerk, could you please read the next item into the record?
Yes, sir. Item 13, Resolution 2021-6, Establishing Residential Dwelling Unit allocations for 2021 and Assigning Allocation to Pools Pursuant to Chapter 14.27 of the Lakewood Municipal Code.
Thank you very much. I'll now open the public hearing. I will acknowledge that there were two comments that came in on Lakewood Speaks today. And there was a mention that this did come up to Lakewood Speaks a little bit later than the rest of the items. And that had to do with the calculations that came through at the end of the year. And so this was properly posted in our legal posting ways. And certainly appreciate the folks for letting us know. I'm glad that we were able to get those folks' comments. I will, again, so this is public comment. Mr. Rome, is there anybody who wishes to speak? If you are on the phone, if you'd like to press star nine?
No callers.
No callers, okay. So let me go ahead and Counselor Franks, do you have procedure? Or can I call in a motion of second for discussion? Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, can I have a motion, please?
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-6.
Second.
All right, motion of second. Counselor Franks, your hand is up.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Basically, what I'm going to be trying to understand tonight is really just what I believe to be kind of the front end of the process, which is what should be, in my view, kind of the simple math. And so I'm hoping that staff can kind of, we got a staff memo that kind of had a lot of paragraphs and a lot of information in it. But my plain understanding of it is that the ordinance calls for how it sets the starting number. And then across the, since the ordinance has been passed, council has done resolutions to decrement in different years, different numbers. And so my understanding was it would be that starting number plus those debits. And then that would be kind of the number that we're bucketing tonight. But that doesn't seem to line up with what I'm seeing in the staff memo, which kind of contemplates carryover units, which I don't find that the ordinance contemplates. So I'm just hoping to kind of first take care of the math part of it before we kind of talk about the bucketing part of that. So that's kind of my hope for the evening.
Great. Ms. Hodgson, is that something we want to address now? Is that something that we can?
Yeah, I think that this is a great time for Travis to explain the way staff came up with the calculation. So that's a great segue for him to discuss that at the front. And of course, this is Travis Parker, our planning director. So thanks, Mayor.
Welcome, Ms. Parker.
Good evening, how are you? So, yeah, I can run through basically staff's calculations in the memo in front of you and the result of the resolution. The simple number is the 701. That's laid out very clearly in the ordinance, the calculation of existing number of residential units in the city. 1% of that number is 701. So that's the base that we're starting with. However, as you mentioned, last year, there was this whole issue around authority to continue. And council identified a year ago, January, 840 units that were granted authority to continue under the ordinance. And the instruction that staff was given, or the instructions that we walked away understanding were that we were to account for those units in such a way that the result of granting those units authority to continue would be no different than the result in if they all had to get allocations. So that Lakewood's not getting any more net units by granting them authority to continue than if they had all had to get allocations. That was our understanding. So we first had to adjust that 840 unit based, or 840 number based on changes that happened in the year. So obviously, a month or two ago, council granted a new project, authority to continue, the Whitefence Farm, that's 220 units. And there were then 105 of that original 840 that did not move forward. So taking 105 away from 840 and adding 222 to that, we ended up with 937 units under authority to continue. So these are units that we want to account for to make sure that Lakewood doesn't end up with any more units if they had all had to get allocated than we would have if they'd all had to get allocations. So in 2020, there were 509 of the original units that could or should have been created at the beginning of the year that were never used, either not created by the council or not used over the course of the year. So that's 509 units that would have been assigned to these authority to continue if they had gotten allocations, but that were not used in 2020. So we took 937 minus that 529. That leaves 428 authority to continue units that still have to be accounted for, that still could not have been built under the system that required them to get allocations. So given council direction to spread this over three years, we still have two more years to spread them out this year and in 2021 and also in 2022. So we took that 428, divided that, divided that out over the two years to take 214 units away per year from what you create. So 701 is our base number for this year. Taking 214 away from that is 487 for this year. And I do apologize, there wasn't one place in the staff memo that said 480 instead of 487. I think the formulas were right, but the, you know, our paste and last minute numbers, I think the number ended up wrong. But it is correct in your resolution. And this would still leave us 214 units that we need to account for next year.
Okay, so that gives us a baseline for the math. Counselor Abel, or real quick, Counselor Abel, Counselor Franks, did you have a follow up to that?
The only thing I wanted to, and maybe Counselor Abel's going to speak to this, but I think the carryover. So Counselor Abel, I think maybe wants to speak to that part. But my understanding is the ordinance doesn't contemplate that, but I will defer to other speakers.
Great, okay. Counselor Abel?
Thank you. My only issue with this is it requires us to carry over some allocations. According to the ordinance, the plain language of the ordinance in Section 14.27.040 Paragraph D, the language reads, period of validity, allocations are only valid and can only be used from the date of issue through the last day of the allocation period for which they are issued, at which time they expire. The language is simple and clear. There is, there are a lot of sections in the SGI that have some language that could be interpreted a number of ways. This is plain and direct. We can't carry any of these over. I have presented a proposal for our planning retreat that we look at the, to revisit the legislative language of this ordinance and clear up some of the vagaries. And, but this is not vague. This is not left interpretation. It says they expire at the end of the allocation period, which was, I believe, Mr. Parker, January 1st?
Absolutely. I don't think there's anything in our memo.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
I don't think there's anything in our memo that's intended to carry anything forward.
I believe there is. You're talking about adding allocations that have been awarded but not used, even through authority to continue? It sure reads that way. Where are you coming up? We should have 701 new units, new allocations available next year. Where do the others come from?
I don't understand the question. 701?
701 units.
Right, and we're saying to take away.
We're saying that 428 are being carried over through authority to continue.
No, 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 quite the opposite. We're saying we have 428 that we still need to account for and not produce in this year. So without any authority to continue projects, without any of this discussion, we create 701 now. However, our instruction from council last year was we need to lower that number each year in order to account for those authority to continue projects.
Right, we're amortizing something in the neighborhood of 2,000 units, 2,800 units over three years?
937 units.
937 units over three years.
And.
And that stands.
Right, and 509 of those can be accommodated in 2020 numbers. That leaves us 428 that we still need to accommodate in 2021 and 2022. So nothing's being carried over. We still have stuff that we need to lower this year and next year to make sure we accommodate those authority to continue projects.
That's not the way I read your memo. We already made a, under 20, Ordinance 2028, or Resolution 2020-8, we already compromised and made those numbers a thing. And now we're being asked to change that. You're saying staff could, or council could have last year done so and so, but we didn't do so and so. Instead, we passed 2,008. So it seems to me that we're carrying over some that shouldn't. The reduction is much lower because we're using, or should be much lower because we're using expired allocations.
I.
I understand it.
I'm not sure I follow. I mean, the number that, we created eight, or we, council decided to accommodate 840 authority to continue projects in 2020 in the resolution a year ago. But that number has changed. Some of those weren't built, and council added some through the Whitefence Farm project. So the number we need to accommodate through authority to continue has changed since that.
What wasn't built expired, according to 14.27.040 Paragraph D.
No, I mean.
Was not built and used this year in the allocation period, whatever is left over at January 1st cannot or must expire.
Mr. Abel, we're not talking about projects that got allocations. We're talking about projects that didn't have to get allocations.
Correct.
Correct, Mayor, explain.
So Counselor Abel, Counselor Franks has her hand up. I'm going to go to her.
Well, you just made a comment that was unexplained, Mayor. If you would explain why you said. Well, you just made a comment that was unexplained, Mayor. If you would explain why you said correct, I might be persuaded.
Well, I think, I think maybe I might be, but at least I think now I follow what was done. So, I kind of, not that I agree with what was done, I'm just saying I think I follow what was done. So, so Travis, I'm gonna be looking for you to kind of nod if, if what I'm, so basically, the, the number that we have left to account for across the two years was the 937.
Total number across three-
Total, total number. And was that the total number that was remaining, let's just say that the, everything, let's just play devil's advocate, everything was consumed in 2020, would then it be 937 that were remaining to be decremented equally across the next two years?
No. No, no, no. 937 would, would have been the correct number to assign in, at the beginning of 2020. That was all the 840 plus the White Fence Farm, and then dropping out those projects in the 840 that never got built. So, 937 is the number of housing units in Lakewood that were, that proceeded with authority to continue, or will proceed with authority to continue.
So, I guess where, where I would say, I think that, that potentially, that I'm going to need to see kind of the resolutions and kind of follow the paper trail. I'm not sure tonight is, is the night. I guess now that I'm hearing all these different things, I want to follow the paper trail real closely to make sure that my vote, of course, respects the, the ordinance, and certainly at this point, the way it was all put together. So, I would feel more comfortable, we, we just need to have this done in January to push this to the next meeting. I can put in a request for all the, kind of the paper trail that I think we would need to see in order for us all to be comfortable. I know everybody on council, we all want to follow the ordinance and do what's right, but I think kind of splitting this here and the way it was kind of munged together, I just don't think it, for me personally, it's clear enough, but certainly want to hear from others. I see other, Charlie's hands gone back up. But I just think that we have time, and we certainly want to be respectful to all parties and make sure we get this right. Because in the future, this should just be a rather routine process to get to the number and then the bucketing. It shouldn't be this much churn, because we shouldn't have this much, again, the ordinance doesn't give us a lot of flexibility on this point. So, I'll defer to others, but I would be more comfortable to get my paperwork in better order before I cast a vote.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Protem Skilling?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Franks, and, and just a, a different view on this. The, the bulk of what we should be discussing when this comes to us every January is where the, what pools we're going to assign things to. Like, that's where our night goes, that's where our debate happens, that's what we respond to. This number, whatever this number is, should be, it's unequivocal, it's, it's un, you can't attack it anyway, it is the number. There is only one number. This isn't a subjective exercise. So if there are questions, which it sounds like there are, just need some more discussion and more, maybe look at some more things, we need to, the council be unanimous on what this number is. Because going forward for the rest of the year, when we're dealing with SGI issues, I do not want to look back on tonight or any other night and say, "Well, see, we shouldn't have started with that disputed number." There is no, there, there cannot be a dispute on this number. It's just the math is whatever the math is. So let's get to that. Or, Counselor Franks is correct in that, yes, this has to be done in January, but if we need to kick this to a later meeting so that this, everyone's favorite term, the low-hanging fruit, is a 30-second conversation, and then the rest of our night is, would you like to put it in an open pool, affordable pool, that's where we should be spending our time.
Thank you. And a point of clarification before I go to Counselors Bita, then Abel, do we have this read in as a motion a second? We do, so we would just need, we would need an amendment if somebody wanted to do that, to move it to the next meeting, so we could do that and go forward. All right, Counselor Bita, and then Counselor Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in agreement with my co-counselors. This needs a little closer look, and I, I think it's best if we table it. That's all.
Counselor Abel, is that something you want to do as a motion?
Firstly, I'd like to agree with my counsel, my fellow counselors, the, the numbers seem to be very confusing. And we were looking at 300 or so in Resolution 2020-8, and this would increase that significantly. So I would move that we table or postpone to a date certain this discussion to three weeks hence, two weeks hence?
One, one second, before we have a, before somebody seconds that. So, two things, does this have to be done in January, and if so, would that be January 24th?
Probably. And it does have to be done in January, and I believe last year we did. Pardon me, we did it on the 27th.
It does. That's accurate. It has to be done in, in, in January, and so we can move it to date certain of January 25th, which is a regular meeting.
Good.
So we can do that. And while I have the floor, perhaps we can find a different and more clear way to describe the calculation so that it becomes kind of a template for every single year. So people become familiar with the form, and we can, Travis and I will work on how, how can we better convey this information, so that that'll be our template, so we don't have to kind of wrestle with this once, every year, once a year. So we'll, we'll see if we can come up with a way to make it more clear.
I think I still have the floor, and I agree with that. I do want to caution that what we do these next couple of years will be the anomaly, because after that, we will be, our amortization will be complete, and will be down to a pure 1% number, and that will be yielded through simple math. So, I understand Mr. Parker's, I think I understand Mr. Parker's point, not that I agree with it, but I think I understand where he's coming from. So, I think that solution is, is very elegant. Ms. Hodson, thank you. So, I would move then that we delay consideration to a date certain of January 25th.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
Great. We have a motion a second. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Johnson, your hand is up.
Thank you. I just would like to thank Counselor Franks for bringing forth this discussion. You did it in a very elegant way, and I appreciate that. Doing this is the right thing to do to give us two more weeks to really understand this. It is very confusing, and it really needs a little bit more thought and time. Thank you.
Okay, motion a second on the amended to move forward to the 25th. But, Mr. Parker, were you raising your hand?
Just, just as a follow-up question, is there, is it just a matter of the format in which the information is provided, or is there more information that we could provide that would help? Is there additional information that's requested?
Counselor Franks, I'm gonna, your hand is up.
So what I think I would be wanting to know is to get any resolutions that we pass, decision outputs from that, handling of where we determined, you know, our numbers that we were going to divide. So when we did the first one, we said, well, we're going to divide this across three years. You have to, just if you show the paper trail, because once something for me's been put into a bucket, let's say the 2020 bucket, that's the bucket it's in. And so I just want to be sure to be able to follow all of council's decision points, as well as our starting numbers. I think that would help as well. So probably pulling those resolutions, and then any of, of those, because I think they all went to resolution where we determined how we were going to handle those. That probably concludes the paper trail for me.
Counselor Abel?
You're on mute, Counselor. You're still muted.
As I was saying, undercover of mute, my only concern is the language, what council, this, Mr. Parker's memo contains figures that are dependent upon the phrase, "What we could have done last year." We didn't do it last year. Perhaps we could have, perhaps we should have. We didn't. So let's look at the numbers more purely, without the speculation of what could have been done. That's my concern, and I agree with everything else Ms. Franks asked for.
All right. Yep. So motion a second to move this to the 25th with more information. And certainly, you know, these folks are available all the time in between, if you'd like to try to get these answers also. So, motion a second on the amendment, please cast your votes. That passes, looks like 11 ayes, zero nays. Mayor Protem, will you then make a motion? Oh, Ms. Hodson?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point that because we're outside of our normal submittal times, you'll be getting this information just as quickly as we can, but it won't be aligned with a packet for, for the 25th, because that was already due a while, a couple of days back. So we'll get it to you as soon as we can, so that you have advance notice and you can review it. But give us a, please have some forgiveness there, because we won't be able to make it in the right sequencing of submittals. Just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. All right, Mayor Protem, can I now have a motion as amended, please?
I move the, um, I guess it would be, I move to postpone-
Resolution-
Resolution 21-6 as amended to the date of Jan, January 25th. But, Mr. Graham, you are off mute.
Did you want to weigh in?
No, I was just waiting to be asked a question. It doesn't really matter how you do it, as long as it's very clear what we're doing. So, if Mr. Skilling, so one way to do it would be to have the motion in the second, you know, pulled back, and then, and then move to postpone the, the resolution to the 25th. But I think this works just as well, and instead, I think Mr. Skilling's motion would, would be to amend his motion to include discussing this again on the 26th. Because, and then the motion would still be on the table. It would still be there and available to, to do. But if that's too confusing, it'd probably be best to just withdraw the motion and the second, and redo it with a postponement to the 25th.
10-4, let's do that clean. So, Counselor-
I withdraw my second.
Okay.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. All right. So we've now withdrawn the-
So I move to postpone Resolution 2021-6 to a date certain of January 25th, 2021.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I think we've discussed enough of this. So, please cast your votes. That passes 11 ayes, zero nay. Nays, I guess it's nays. All right. Mr. Clerk, could you please reread item 11 into the record under General Business?
Yes, sir. Item 11, Ordinance O-2021-2, authorizing the sale of the Westland Town Center parking lot in accordance with that certain option contract entered into as of June 16, 1992, between the City of Lakewood and the owners of the Westland Mall, Westland Town Center.
All right, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, and I appreciate your support in, in pulling this and moving this out of the previous vote. This is a very interesting situation. Those counselors in Ward 1, and probably Ward 2, have received a great deal of community input. The community is certainly watching this. There's, there is a great deal of nuances regarding the contracts that were written in 1992. And I would propose that we go into an executive session in order for council to all understand some of the issues that are needing some clarification with this. There's, one of them being that there's concern that a former council encumbered future councils. There's a lot for us to understand, to digest before we go forward. And, and then we would again, of course, put it back on the schedule at the appropriate time. I just ask for your support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Johnson certainly would support that, and just, I would look for some clarification. So, the idea is to postpone, but we probably don't have a date, because we need to schedule an executive session, and then we would go forth with a first and second reading. So, Mr. Graham, I have a couple of counselors' hands up. I'd go to them, but if you could maybe think of some language that could get us there, that Counselor Johnson could then propose. So I'll go to Counselor Abel, and Counselor Labir.
I just wanted to clarify, get a clarification from Ms. John, or Councilwoman Johnson, that she's talking about an executive session for the purposes of legal advice?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Labir?
Yeah, I was just gonna quickly support what Counselor Johnson's trying to do. I think it'd be good for everybody to have a refresher and to relook at, you know, all the different elements of this issue, and to look at the, the legal arguments pro and against and all that. So, just be happy to support her. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Graham, could you maybe produce some, or help with some language? Essentially, we don't, I know we don't have a date, because we're gonna have to do some scheduling. So we need to just, I guess, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, but we don't have a date, I can tell you that.
One, one option for you is to move to postpone this ordinance O-21, or O-2020-2 to the, if you want, the regular council meeting immediately following an executive, an executive session that will be scheduled for the, the purpose of receiving legal advice on this matter. If you think that gives you enough time.
Yeah, because it doesn't set in a place an exact date, but it says, after an executive session, the first regular meeting, we will have, it'll be rescheduled. So, I guess, Counselor Johnson, if you want to take a shot at either restating that, or just saying, "So moved," for the record, we can do that.
It would be the easiest way, wouldn't it? So let me take a shot at it, Greg. You said it very elegantly. I'd like to postpone Ordinance 2020-2 to a future date in order for us to go into an executive session, and then reschedule to put this on the calendar for council after that executive session.
So before, before, there's a, please don't second. So, Counselor Johnson, it's, it's actually 2021-2, not 2020-2.
Thank you. Thank you.
And if I, if I might clarify just a little bit, and this is absolutely up to council members, my suggestion would be to schedule first reading of the ordinance to the first regular council meeting following the executive session. It dawned on me, however, that that could be interpreted as the next council meeting two weeks after an executive session, or if you had an executive session prior to a regular council meeting, that very day. So- So I don't know if you want to do it a little bit differently.
What you're saying is that we would have an executive session prior to a city council and then at that point, go into the first reading for it. Is that correct?
Yes, and you could do that on the same day if the executive session is scheduled for the same day as, as you would have that first reading.
Whatever is the least cumbersome for the council and for our calendar. I'm open to whatever's makes the easiest. And that would be fine. I'm happy to have a postponement or a continuation of 2021 dash two to a future date to reschedule and have the first reading after the first, or first reading for the regular council following or prior to having our executive meeting or executive.
Okay, so, so let's, let's pull, let's pull this whole motion off the floor, please. So Counselor Vincent, if you could remove your second, please.
Do you want me to withdraw a second?
Please.
Yeah, I withdraw my second.
All right, Counselor Johnson, if you wouldn't mind just withdrawing this motion, just to be clean.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, so I'm going to go to Mayor Pro Tem real quick. And he might have some language also, but.
Well, we could have Counselor Johnson just, you can postpone this ordinance to a date certain after we have an executive session. And that date certain be at the reasonable, at some following. There's no reason to pigeonhole ourselves to that particular meeting. We can just say for purposes of tonight, we're postponing it to a date after we've had an executive session. I think that is probably sufficient for our purposes tonight, and that way we're not pigeonholed and find ourselves in a jam where we say, oh, shoot, we can't actually do it then because of whatever.
That does sound cleaner. Okay, let me try it again here, folks. I'd like to postpone 2021 dash two to a date certain after we have an executive session regarding the Westland parking, parking lot issue.
Hold off on a second. Does that pass the legal muster?
Well, and it can't actually be to a date certain because to postpone something to a date certain, you have to have a certain date. You have to identify that specific date. So just saying a date following an executive session would be just fine.
Okay. Hopefully the last time. Postpone 2021 dash two to a date certain, excuse me, to a city council meeting after we have an executive session. Thank you. Good, good.
Motion and a second. Counselor Vincent, please.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, and is there any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, please cast your votes. And it looks like that passes 11 ayes and zero nays. And I will certainly say, forgive me, I should have worked on the language. And so in the future, when we have these things and you bring them to our attention, I'll certainly make sure that we have an opportunity to produce some language so we don't have to do this on the fly. So thank you, Counselor Johnson, and I thought we did have it all figured out, but clearly we didn't, but we got to where we needed to be. All right, I have one thing under general business. So I want to thank everybody for getting your proposals into, for the retreat, which will be on the 30th. So the other thing that we need to try to tackle on the 24th is the ratification of council committees. And as you know, this can be a struggle because I certainly try to accommodate everybody's wishes. And I think we've been able to do that pretty well. We've also had a concerted effort to spread our commitments equally around. And so that makes sure that council representation is mixed on all the different committees and can lend to rich conversation with the different voices of the elected body. And so what I'm struggling with, and I need your direction, is that going forward, how do you want me to do this? Do you want me to try to place in an equitable manner folks on committees or another way to make this happen? And this is an opportunity where I could use your feedback. And if you don't want to discuss that tonight, you can send me that. But I've on multiple occasions tried to find a way to address this. And unfortunately, I think this is really a council conversation. So Counselor Abel, your hand is up.
I agree, Mayor. I think what we've done in the past is that wardmates consult with each other to see if they're satisfied with the current county, committee responsibilities. And if not, to let you know, and if we do, to let you know. And I, I think that is probably the best way to handle it. Counsel, Counselor Johnson and I have discussed this already. So I, I think it is better to stay with what we're all comfortable with as opposed to selecting, starting fresh out of the gate every year. This year, we have no new council people. Next year, there will be an opportunity for council change during the election. And after that, then, as you usually do after an election, you poll the new council people to see where they want to serve. And I think you've had it right all this time. So why, why change what already works?
Yep. Great. Thank you. Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ditto on Counselor Abel's comment. Counselor Gutwin and I have talked and we would like to stay on our same committees if that is possible. I think that, you know, there is a wonderful thing about carrying over experience from one year to another. It is also very important for new counselors to get training. We're all kind of old horses right now. So I think that, you know, this year we ought to let you off the hook and just say, unless someone speaks loudly, quickly, just roll us over to our existing committees and we'll all be happy. However, I would encourage everybody on the council needs to participate on committee work. Everyone, that's how the work gets shared and that's how we respond back to our constituents. So I would encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I just wanted to echo what the others have said. Counselor Skilling and I have already had our conversation. We have shared with you that we want to stay on our current committees. But I did want to make sure that everyone knows that this is an opportunity for the leadership within those committees to change. So there is some opportunity within there, but Mayor, I think you've done a fair job. You've certainly done outreach. You know that I work full time and so you've always been very cognizant and worked with me. So I don't have any desire to make a change at this point. I think it's been done fair and equitably, but I do want you to know that if you do find that you have, you know, you need to reach out and with some, some openings. I think that it may make sense to, to do that in a way that is, you know, where our communities can kind of see that engagement. And counsel, we may want to discuss that I have had community members not know who was on which committee. So they didn't know who to reach out to. Let's say that somebody had a head start question, but they weren't sure which counselors and they didn't realize that there wasn't one counselor from each ward on that one, that that's not how they're constructed. And so I think it may make sense if the rest of council agrees, and we might be able to discuss this at some point in the future, that we find a webpage that we can put up that shows all the committees and demonstrates like people would know. Oh, Counselor Franks is on the Housing Policy Commission and Counselor Skilling is on Development Dialogue, for example. That way they can more efficiently route their questions and concerns. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Springsteen?
Um, you know, I know, I know this is a difficult question. I just today put in a request for council action for a resolution to establish an ad hoc council committee regarding police policy and accountability and to aid in the formation of a civilian review board. And that's the committee I would be interested in being part of. Essentially, I've been on that committee, a committee of one, for the past almost year. And, and it has been fairly overwhelming to the point where I've barely been able to make a, a living to support my family. And so I think it would be nice if we could sort of ratify that that's an actual committee. With respect to the other committees and what happened last year, I was, I was, my name was placed on committees without discussion or consent from me. And I, I don't really feel that that's a good way to go about things. Unfortunately, my wardmate had a lot put on his shoulders because I simply didn't have the time to serve on all those other committees that I was placed on. You know, this is almost a voluntary, voluntary position. I mean, we get a little bit of pay, but it's basically voluntary. And so one of the questions I've always had is why do we have so, so many committees? And why can't other citizens help with those committees? And why does there need to be a counselor from every single ward on each committee? And is there a way to, to make it a little more viable for people like me who is a single mom? And I just don't, I don't, I just don't have the time for that. And it has been a complaint of mine over this past year that, that there is not consideration for the needs of somebody who has certain family constraints of that nature. And case in point, just like last year, you have set the annual retreat on a weekend that I'm not available. I have my kids that weekend. And so I don't understand why this continues to be an issue. But, you know, I think that there are other ways we can approach the committees without putting down the single mom because she's trying to put food on the table. As I have felt, you know, has been kind of the attitude from frankly, a lot of you all year. Like, why aren't you pulling your weight? But guess what? I just had a meeting with Representative Herod and Representative Caraveo this morning for two hours, trying to fix things with regard to ketamine so that the City of Lakewood doesn't have so much liability. So yeah, I'm pulling my weight despite being a single mom. But this system, this system doesn't work. And so I, I don't know what to suggest is the answer other than I think we should be able to assign other citizens who are willing to help with these committees to sort of shoulder some of that burden. I mean, in the alternative, you could, we could ask the citizens of Lakewood to make these positions that we have a real paid position like we have in, in like the City of Denver, where people don't have to work full time and still try to serve on council. But, you know, barring that, which I don't, I don't think anybody has any intention to do anytime soon. We have to have some understanding about the different types of people who serve on council and, and what we're capable of doing. So I don't know the answer. I'm sorry, Mayor. But I, I just ask not to just be randomly assigned, assigned to committees like I was last year. And, and, and I've given you the committee I'd like to be part of. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Bida, and then Harrison, then Vincent.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the record, I'm satisfied with the assignments that I had last year. Would like to continue with them this year as well. And I think the system that we've used in the past where we kind of choose which committees we want, and then you try to accommodate as the best you can. I think that's pretty much what we've done and it's worked well, at least for me. So I have no problem. I'd rather do that than change anything. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Harrison, Vincent, then Labir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Springsteen, when you ran for council, there were a lot of things that were, you know, described to you as what would be part of the job. Not only are you showing up for Monday night meetings, but you also have committee assignments. That's how we reach out to our people. And that's how we, we serve the residents that we run for. Because you choose to have one particular issue, that is your chosen issue, does not mean we still don't need your participation on the other committees. You can run with the, the police issue and do whatever you want to do with it. But we do still need your participation on these other committees. I, we have lots of people that have working jobs. And they've figured out how to make it work. So I'm going to encourage you to figure out how to make it work and not put all of the burden on Mr. Bida. He's really supported you tremendously and I would love to see that that would, that you would step up and take a few more of the committees. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Counselor Harrison, I, I would.
Excuse me, I think I have the floor.
Counselor Vincent has the floor right now.
Sorry. Thank you. Yeah, I, I'd just like to say we all have, I know some of us have what I would call national interests and very global interests. And some may know that I have a real passion for historical preservation. And I work on that at a state and kind of national level. And I may be unaware, but I thought the only committee that you were assigned to last time was a judge's salary committee, which means meets once a year. I know you were unable to attend that, so I didn't notice that there was a lot of personally back and forth about signing you to just random committees. It is, it's a tough job and we've had single people on this council before. And point of fact, minority, single folks who were on multiple committees. So I really encourage you to join. I know it's difficult. I know you have a passion for things. And the one that you want to be on is not a recognized committee. And I don't even think it can come forth as a resolution on the 25th. But I will let other people decide, decide that. That's outside of my wheelhouse. So thank you.
Counselor Labir, then Counselor Springsteen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to comment that, you know, I appreciate the difficult situation that you can be in and trying to get us all organized, which could be a full-time job in and of itself. So I just appreciate you, you know, making any effort you can to, to make that happen in an equitable and positive way. And to Counselor Springsteen's point, I, you know, I certainly think the way we have our committee structured is not monolithic and doesn't have to be the way that it currently is. There's certainly room for improvement and change and opportunities for that. We certainly don't always have to do it by ward. And I think since Counselor Springsteen also brought up potentially creating another committee, you know, it's important to think about any future committees that we are being sure that we're thinking about how to distribute it. And, and we don't always have to do it by ward. You know, a lot of other cities do it all sorts of different ways. Sometimes it's, you know, three, just three council members, not, not of any particular ward. Or, you know, there's, there's a lot of other ways. I hate to use the term, but you know, there's a lot of ways to skin a cat. So I think, you know, it is worth considering, you know, and I think from our committee chairs, you know, our, our committees, there's a, a committee that Counselor Springsteen might have an interest in. Perhaps there's a way to reform. Perhaps there's a way to reform that structure of the committee at a future date. You know, we have these council meetings every other Monday or every two Mondays a month. It's probably not out of the realm of palisabilities to restructure certain ones with an ordinance if there's some particular interest. I'm just throwing that out there and wanted to just mention that, you know, these things are changeable. We make changes all the time. And I'm happy to entertain those if, if there's some interest in the future. But anyway, just wanted to comment on that. And thanks for everything, for everybody.
Counselor Springsteen, then Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Counselor Labir. You know, I, I mean, that felt a little bit supportive, that we don't have to do everything the way we've always done it, just because we've always done it that way. And, you know, I've heard some flack on the judges' salary committee a couple times. I was not even made aware of when the meetings were. I did reach out at one point and tried to find out and didn't really get much communication. And then everybody wants to come back around and give me a hard time about it after the fact. When I have spent hours upon hours upon hours trying to deal with the ketamine issue in the city and save us from liability, we have a House Bill, SB 20217, that our city is going to have to comply with. We need to figure out how we're going to meet new state laws, and we're also going to have federal laws coming down the pike in terms of the same kind of issues as we get, get a new administration. And so, you know, to just discount what I have been doing as unimportant, where, as what everything you all have been doing is important, I don't, I don't think that's fair. And when I ran for office, what I knew was I had to serve on one committee. That's all the policies and procedures say. And so I have done so. And I think it's unfortunate, speaking to what Counselor Johnson had said earlier, is that women aren't supporting women on this council and women's issues. And in fact, I got more support from the men on this council just now. And so, you know, I, I don't understand this kind of attitude, but I hope that we can work together and figure out the best way through this. But I agree with Counselor Labir that we can find solutions. We're smart people, and we will do so. Thanks.
Counselor Vincent, then Franks.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, because there seems to be this, this disinformation, or maybe disinformation, that all representatives from all wards have to serve on these committees. And I don't know about all of them, but I know community corrections, the judges' salary, Head Start, and Dr. Cog are served by one or maybe two counselors that have stepped up to that. So I just wanted to clear, make that clear for the constituents out there, that not all of us have to be on every single committee. So thank you.
Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul, appreciate it. Well, first I wanted to, since we were on this topic, certainly make it clear to the community that for all these committees and commissions, we have a staff liaison. And they're charged with kind of making sure that they do the outreach. Obviously, we're always looking to accommodate schedules the best that they can. If, for example, the judges' salary committee, I do want to make sure that the community's aware that the staff liaison did do a multiple outreach to all of us, did not hear back from everybody that was on the committee. So we did need to move forward in order to have that meeting. I was elected as the chair. It's a committee that meets one time per year. And I did want to acknowledge that Counselor Springsteen did reach out to staff, our staff liaison, after the fact and asked about, would there be a follow-up meeting? Being the chair, I did outreach to Counselor Springsteen and never heard back. So I just want, I'm not trying to, you know, I don't want this to be a thing, but I think it's important for our community to kind of have a sense of the fact that our staff is really working hard. COVID was a very difficult time, obviously getting, getting everyone together, and people had a lot of challenges with, you know, maybe having to have children at home, that they were homeschooling and all of that. And so I know our staff was working really hard to accommodate schedules the best they can. And certainly, no one was not notified, but maybe did not see the invite. And then certainly, my outreach was done, as I would expect any chair of any committee to do, to make sure all the members were up to speed. So I just wanted to throw in those comments as well. Thank you.
Okay, well, you've all helped me out tremendously. I appreciate all the comments. And, you know, at the end of the day, we're a body of 11. We're not a body of 10. And we're a part-time council, and if folks want to take that up as their passion play, they can go to the voters and do a charter change that institutes that. But right now, this is who we are. This is what we have. And it's important to all the folks that we represent that we participate as much as possible. I think this merits maybe a further conversation about our committees. Certainly, everybody has been amenable to try to make things available to as many people as possible, trying to schedule around kids in the morning, trying to schedule around full-time jobs, travel, those sorts of things. Unfortunately, it falls back on me. And, and as you can see, I get some of this criticism, and I did actually put one member on one committee after there was comments back. Now, I've been asked to put somebody on a committee that doesn't even exist. And so certainly, we can't do that. And so I will do my best based upon your feedback. I will also just state that, you know, things that were submitted tonight, Counselor Springsteen, there is a process, and there are forms that these need to be submitted, and it doesn't just appear at the next meeting, because that's what you want. We've had to really set these norms, and everybody plays by these rules, and there has to be a buy-in to how we operate, and that's through the policies and procedures. I tried desperately to make sure that everybody could be available. In fact, one person canceled a long-scheduled vacation to be here on the 30th, based off feedback, Counselor Springsteen, that you gave, that said the 30th was doable. So I'm really sad to hear that this is not doable now, but this is set in stone. And this is a virtual meeting, and hopefully that that can happen. I remember last year, we had tried to see if we could get childcare, tried to find any which way. I sent out an email saying, are there alternative dates during the week? Where some council members responded and said they could do it, but they'd have to take off work. So everybody is trying to work together, and we need to really encourage you to do the same. What we do as a body is sanctioned. Work that you are doing on a passion outside of here is not work of this body. That's work that you are doing on your own and have not had buy-in from the group as a whole. And so I think it's really important to distinguish between your role as a council member and as a citizen. And so, you know, these are not easy conversations, and I appreciate the folks weighing in, and we have a lot of committees, but we've been trying to do a lot of work, and we're going to hear about that at the retreat. We may have to sacrifice a lot of our goals, potentially, in order for us to see us move forward, because we have piled so much work on, and we want to be able to see us move forward with some meaningful stuff. So I will certainly do my best, and I do believe firmly that this is a body of 11. And there were no hindrances about what we do prior to running for this office. And at the end of the day, we serve the people, and they deserve to have their leaders representing them as much as possible, frankly. This is a very, very serious job, and we deal with very serious things. And I will echo that we have a very talented staff, and it's not fair to say that you weren't invited, because we've seen the emails, and I've sent those out to ask you to say, what happened? And there's been no response. So to close and to get us out of here, those submittals, I will resend you the form. There's forms that we have for you to submit, forms for council review. And you can put those into that, and then we'll try to get those scheduled. The goal was to have all of us submit these so we could discuss them on the 30th for our retreat. So I would encourage you to really look at doing that and see if you can make it on the 30th. That way, we can address these at the retreat as a body. If not, they'll just be placed probably sometime in February, to be honest with you. And it will just be placed to see if council wants to go further to discuss those. And if you need some help getting those forms or understanding that process, I'm happy to help facilitate that, okay? Mayor Protem Skilling?
Yeah, just to reiterate that prior to the planning session, we need to have, and I think we were trying to get them all in today, I suppose they come in tomorrow or what have you, they will make it. What we're trying to do is get all of council priorities, and we've received quite a few. We're trying to receive all of those, and then those will be decided. And whether that's forming a new committee, whether it's an open space proposal, whatever it is, this is now the time that we need to do that, if it's a, if it's a big lift. We just need to make sure that we get those forms in so that those can be discussed. And I know that, that, those have been coming in, and it sounds like Counselors Springsteens, if they weren't submitted that way, that's the way that they would come in, that if there are some, some items, for example, starting a new committee, the appropriate way to handle that would be to complete the form, and then that will be discussed at the planning session.
Thank you. And, and I, we did get a lot, I think 16 or 17 of them. So council was very active in, in trying to get those through, and I look forward to seeing them. I haven't seen them all, and I look forward to seeing what people want to do, as well as picking up our goals from 2020, which were kind of put on hold due to a little worldwide pandemic. All right. Well, thank you for that conversation. I appreciate it. Certainly not a delicate way to approach it, but important to try to weigh in. I will do those committees, and we will ratify them on the 24th. And if folks don't like how that turned out, we'll again have that conversation. I think we're at the point where we have council reports. Yes. So I'm going to start with Ward 1, and we'll go up the scale. Counselors Johnson and Abel.
Go ahead, Charlie.
The city manager's mention of passing of Ron Burns was very eloquent. In my career as a journalist, one of the things I enjoyed most was scrutinizing public officials. It often made public officials quite irritable with me. And at one time, a couple of former county officials, they veiled threats. And it concerned me, and, you know, I kept looking over my shoulder. Well, one afternoon, I looked over my shoulder leaving the Lakewood Police Department. Ron Burns was there, and he put his hand on my shoulder and said, I've got your back. That's the kind of man Ron Burns was. Not only that, he was very ethical. We were, City Council at the time was discussing a ban, possible ban on certain dog breeds, including pit bulls. Ron Burns has asked for his opinion, and he declined to give an opinion because he owned a pit bull and could see clearly the conflict of interest. If we all had the kind of ethics and concern for our community members that Ron Burns has or had, this world would be a lot better place. Lakewood was certainly a lot better place for his participation in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate all of the honest conversation that we've had throughout the night. And I just want Counselor Mayor Protem Skilling to know that I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 2, Counselors Vincent and Labir.
Want me to go first, counsel? Okay. Just a couple of quick things. On a, on a nice note, there was a, a very lengthy article in the, I thought lengthy article, in the Denver Post on Saturday about Dorothy Burke from Lakewood, who has put together vets packages. And she and another group of people have then distributed them. It was a very, very nice article. In fact, it was on the inside, and like I said, it was, it was pretty lengthy about all the good work that she has done. And I don't know what word she is, but I just want to say, I think it's important that we say kudos to our folks in the community who have been recognized. So that was, that was wonderful. On a not-so-good note, and it bothers me, St. Bernadette's Church, somewhere between Friday night and Saturday morning, was desecrated. It was horrible. They are, I know the community has reached out to see if they could help clean it up. We have received notice that they really didn't want any community help because of the harsh chemicals they have to use, both on the statues and the brick in the walls. They did not have cameras, but there has been a police, a fellow police officer, a police officer who has been assigned to this. And if anybody has Ring video or any sort of video that has any information on this, you can send it to Josh Strommel, I think is how you pronounce his name, at 303-216-4135. And although it was a horrible, horrible thing, I'd like to thank the community members who reached out, recognized how horrible this was, and pulled together and reached out to the church to see in which ways they could help. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to comment, first of all, congratulations to our Mayor Protem again. Glad to, to see that you're going to be in there for the next year. I want to mention our ward meeting is Wednesday. That's going to be at its usual time. The email, I know, went out today, and we'll make some more posts about that. So looking forward to updating the community on what really sort of overview of what happened last year. And then also, I just want to comment on what happened in the Capitol Building, because I just think as community leaders, I think it's important, you know, that we recognize key moments in our country. And I just really want to strongly condemn, frankly, the attack that occurred at the Capitol Building. I think it's, you know, we should all feel ashamed, really, that this kind of thing happens in our country against what I think is our government, but more importantly, our democracy. And so I just wanted to comment on that. I think it was a sad day in American history. And, you know, it's an important symbol of democracy and freedom around the world that was desecrated. And I just want to strongly condemn those who participated and those who encouraged it, frankly. So, thanks.
Thank you. Ward 3, Counselors Bida, Springsteen.
Counselor Springsteen, would you like to go first?
You can go first.
All right. All right. Well, just a couple of things. We are going to have our, resume our monthly ward meetings, town hall meetings on Saturday, January 23rd, 9 o'clock. Be a virtual meeting, so those that are listening, be, be forewarned or something. We'll get that posted here, maybe tomorrow, the next day. It's still a couple of weeks out. It'll be an open meeting. We've discussed, we're going to do an open meeting and give everybody a chance to kind of comment- give everybody a chance to kind of comment and catch up because we've, of course, had not had our meetings for a couple of months because of the holidays. Also wanted to mention, we had our Food Bank of the Rockies on, on last Tuesday and at Phillips United Methodist Church. We had a great turnout. I think we, we put out close to 500 boxes for families, 500 families were served. This is a drive up event. And I want to thank the Colorado Christian University teams that came out, volunteered, came out and helped us. We had the men's basketball team and the women's basketball team. I think they were competing with each other to see who could load the cars the fastest, but they they got their workout that day. They didn't have to go to practice. So thank you to them and all the volunteers. We had many, many volunteers that come out and worked really hard at that event. So thanks a lot. That's all.
Well, I, you know, I, I, I wanted to just go into again the request for council action that I put in today. And I'm so sorry, I mean, if it wasn't on the right form or whatever, but you know, I have asked for a resolution to establish an ad hoc council committee regarding police policy and accountability and to aid in the formation of a civilian review board. I have asked for a, a resolution to establish a civilian review board or commission of police accountability for the city of Lakewood to review matters involving the police department. And that would be a citizen-led commission separate from the city. And then I've asked for a resolution on the prohibition of the use of sedatives for law enforcement duties like they did in the city of Aurora. Now, what I want to make clear is my intention is not to beat up on police. I, you know, I broke down in my car on a highway with dangerous traffic a couple of weeks ago. And a, a state patrol man pulled up behind me, jumped out of his car without asking questions about his own safety, asked if I was broken down and pushed me out of that dangerous situation. These people put their lives on the line every single day. And I am so appreciative of that, as so many people are. But what I am asking for is to react to what has gone on in our nation and our community and to protect, you know, not just the citizens, but the police as well from, you know, bad policy, bad training, bad whatever it is. And so I, I think that this is an important thing for us to consider, given the flow of how things have gone this year. And to that end, just to report on, you know, you know that the story of Colorado and ketamine was on 60 Minutes in early December. And I had talked to the producers on that and that the grassroots law folks and I met with the governor's staff on December 21st. The Colorado Attorney General, just a couple of days ago, opened a grand jury investigation on the death of Elijah McLean. And that investigation I'm sure is going to include other instances of use of ketamine in Colorado as occurred here in Lakewood. And my stakeholders meeting met with Representative Leslie Herrod and Yedira Caravale this morning. And we're, we've been working diligently on legislation to, to try to address this issue. Now, you know, I see people rolling their eyes at me every time I talk about this and and belittling my efforts and, you know, as the mayor just said, what, what is that, that we, we have a serious job? Well, fighting for racial equality and civil rights in our city, I take pretty seriously. I think that's a serious job. Yes, I agree with that. And just because this, perhaps the council won't sanction that, that doesn't make it any less serious. And so I'm going to keep pushing for that. And I just wanted to correct one thing with regard to that January 30th meeting that we're set for. I did not ever say I was available for that. I said months ago that it was possible I would be available, but we needed to look at other dates. And with respect to our award meeting, I, I am wanting to do something independent as well as our award meeting that is not overseen and controlled and recorded and completely controlled by the city. And so I'm, I'm going to do some Zoom meetings where citizens can just talk to me about what their needs are, what, what is bothering them, how hard COVID has been on them and their businesses. And so I will get some dates and some, some Zoom times out for that shortly. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
All right, Ward Four, what you got?
Well, that put a little pressure on what you got. First and foremost, I want to give a shout out to one of my favorite charities, the Action Center. Wanted to acknowledge that there are people in, in my community who I think for the first time, maybe in their lives, needed to depend on them for some food to get them through difficult times. So I certainly wanted to commend them for the work they've done for more than 50 years in our community. And also if you have the, the means and can contribute, certainly I'm sure cash donations and food donations are very welcome. So certainly wanted to give that shout out. Also, since it was just mentioned, the annual meeting, it is going to be through Zoom. So if those of you who have said, hey, I can't come over and sit with you all because I can't do that. You know what? We can be like a podcast in your ears. So you want to hear what's going on? Certainly we encourage you to, to do that. I wanted to thank Counselor Labir for his comments and certainly make sure that the community is aware that there are resources, there are a lot of people struggling between COVID and the, the recent, you know, attack on our Capitol Hill. Able, uh, mental health resources are available. So if you are finding yourself needing that type of support, be sure to reach out. That is certainly something that we want to encourage and, and everybody just take really good care of each other. We're, we're obviously, we we're hoping for an easier start to 2021, but we're going to be hoping that things do start to, to, to look up for us. So thank you all and on to Counselor Skilling.
Thank you. And I, I echo both Counselor Labir and Counselor Franks, as well as what the mayor said at the top of the meeting. You know, you can't, I don't think you can condemn it enough or, or too often that it needs to be reminded because those of us with smaller children struggle with, you know, they're just learning what government is, let alone how you could possibly comprehend what you just saw. So I think that that's important. I think what Counselor Labir said is very important, that that needs to always be with us, that we're vigilant. And it allows us to sit here on a Zoom meeting for two and a half hours. We need to protect, protect our right to get together and squabble with each other about things that, when, when compared to those events seem pretty unimportant. And it seems what I'm about to say is also unimportant in that grand scheme, but in our group and in our city, I think it is important. And I will thank each of you for your support and me in the vote tonight. I especially want to thank Counselor Gutwin. We will be having, I'm sure we'll be talking soon. We will have some good conversations going forward. I, I can maybe predict who the next Mayor Protem is going to be, but we'll see. And then I would like to thank Counselor Franks as well for her kind words tonight. And thank you all for being together tonight. And then one final thing, Counselor Springsteen on the, I didn't mean to be flippant about the forum, if you took it that way. I was merely trying to just make sure that since the forum that we're going to talk about these 16, 17 items, whatever it is that everybody has, that I just want to make sure that your suggestions, however many there are, those are, that's when we're going to discuss them. So I just want to make sure that nothing gets between the cracks that, that, because that is the place where we will decide whether or not some of these things are priorities for the council to then schedule them on an agenda. So I apologize if I sounded flippant with the forum. That was not my intent.
Right. Thank you. Ward Five?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So just a few things here. I just wanted to let you all know that Jeffco Schools will be going back into in person, or maybe I should say that's the plan in about a week or so, right after Martin Luther King Day. And just, you know, kind of want to throw out to all the parents and all the teachers and all the students. You know, I, I feel how hard this has been. And just a huge thank you to everyone for, for making it work. And then just so that everyone on council knows that that, that change is again coming to our community. We will be having our award meeting. I'll actually let Karen talk about, if you don't mind Karen, our next award meeting. But we, we didn't have a January meeting due to the holiday. Also wanted to just talk about small businesses for just a moment and just throw out, you know, to anyone that is, is able to shop at local businesses right now or support or I saw some information that was put out about, you know, write a review if you can, or tell your friends if you can. And I know it seems like such a small thing, but for example, we just ordered takeout the other night and we got this really beautiful letter from the owner of the business thanking us for, for shopping there and how important that is to our business community. It's really, just really, really hard times. So it's also obviously makes your life easier if you can not cook the meal or clean up the meal, but it, it does really make a big difference. Last thing, so some of y'all know that sometimes it takes me a minute to think through what I want to say about things. So I apologize for bringing up an issue that was closed a while ago, but I do just want to wait in briefly on the issue about committees. And I think everyone really raised some really great points. I think we do, you know, I just want to say I am open to if we can reduce the committee size and some committees to three counselors. I think that there, there's an opportunity to do that. And so I just want to say, I think that that's worth looking into. I do also believe it is really important to serve our community and, and be on the committees. But there are a lot. So I think let's, you know, I think that's worth considering. And finally, congratulations to Counselor Skilling and thank you for the, the kind words. You know, we, we all deal with difficult issues and I think that we all try really to be respectful of each other. And to Counselor Labir's point, you know, it might seem like a small thing, but maybe it's not such a small thing. And maybe it really is a big deal. So I guess truly the last thing is I do thank you, Counselor Labir, for raising that. It was really upsetting to watch and I just want to echo what you said and, and join you in condemning those actions. And yeah, I think, I think it is a big deal when we treat each other with respect. And I think that the words we use really matter. So thank you. That is all.
Thank you. I would say congratulations to Mayor Protem Skilling. I think that's great. You've done a great job last year and I'm looking forward to seeing that you'll continue that hard work again for this year. Dana, I want to be your campaign leader for your Mayor Protem race for next year. So I'll just put you on those. I can't vote for you next year, but I get to be your campaign chairman on that. So I think you would have done a dynamite job. Thank you so much for the choices that you made. I think an anonymous, unanimous vote is very important. So thank you for that. Coming up for our meeting for Ward Five, we're going to have a, a meeting on and we're hoping that a lot of people will tune in. Two different topics. The first is safety tips on how to keep your homes safe. Things like, we've talked about, you know, kind of how to make your doorways really strong and so people couldn't break through them. Looking at the landscaping around your home to make sure that you could see people, you know, action lights that would come on immediately the minute somebody walks by. Some things along that line to where people, because we've been spending a lot more time in our homes, trying to help people feel really safe and secure in their homes. So we're going to have, that is half of the topic. And the other topic you guys are going to give to us, and that is, we're going to report back to our ward on what we talked about at retreat. So we'll come loaded with one and, and we'll actually come, you'll give us the topics for the other half. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Okay. So I have a quick, couple of quick things. So as you know, we're in orange right now, which is good. Our numbers are going back up. And so I imagine that has to do with the Christmas holiday and New Year's. We are hopefully getting close to, to getting to five star level. I hope, which will then allow us to maybe be on the yellow phase. So operate a little bit lower. On a call with the governor last week and just can't stress enough that we're not out of the woods by any means and certainly a fear of, of what's to come. So we have to really encourage folks to do their part, to be smart, to be safe. Frankly, our businesses can't sustain another shutdown. It's just, it's not a reality. They won't, they won't make it through. And so we have to do everything we can and really lead in this capacity, which is hard because there's a lot of stuff that, you know, people are looking to us for right now on a lot of different levels. So just want to really encourage that. Shout out to our healthcare workers. I know that they're, they're stressed and trying to get the rollout for vaccinations. I know Ms. Hodson has sent some things out. Jefferson County Department of Public Health has a lot of information as to the different layers. And certainly want to try to see those get out as fast as possible. Saw a statistic today, I think Israel's almost at 20% and granted they're a country of seven million people. But that just goes to show, you know, the faster we can do this and get these out and get people vaccinated, the better. Really cool thing, speaking about our police department. You know, a couple of months ago, you passed the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Grant, which our PD spearheaded and got a call from folks in Canada and in British Columbia who want to know more about this program. And so they are convening about 80 elected officials in British Columbia and have offered our community action team to come and talk about this great program. And so it's really cool. And one of the comments I got was a lot of times our neighbors to the north kind of look to us and say, we don't need your advice on these things. But yet they, they learned and they've seen and they have, you know, some of their own issues that we face. So really excited about that. Agent Lowe is going to head up that group to present on behalf of our police department. And it just goes to show again how recognized these folks are for what they do and what kind of the progressive thinking that they have for trying to help people. Couple of things I want to throw out for 2021, just to keep in mind. out for 2021, just to keep in mind, and it has been delayed a little bit. The census is supposed to be brought to the president on December 31st. Little bit of a delay, you can probably imagine. But once those numbers are released, you will see some things. There will certainly be redistricting on all the levels and that could include the city of Lakewood. And so that could be another committee that you may see, maybe not this year, but maybe next year, to address redistricting in the city if so warranted. I was around last time we did have to do that, but I think we were able to pretty much keep, I think we kept them about whole. I don't know how, but, uh, the clerk was able to maneuver that. So the other thing also, and what I picked up on last meeting is, you know, we talk in generalities, like we all know what these different plans are, like COFAX 2040. For somebody who's not involved with COFAX a lot, that may be foreign to you. So on the planning page, you'll see all of our plans. And so if you ever have a question, they're all on there. And in fact, even archived are old, old neighborhood plans that used to be part of that, that were rolled in. So when in doubt, check that out. I know you have a lot of spare time. Check that out. But there's a lot of information in those plans that can help you get up to speed. And, um, two final things in closing, uh, certainly Dana, I think I had the opportunity to nominate you as Mayor Pro Tem some time ago, and that did not work out and certainly stand by that. I, I thought you were ready then and certainly think you are ready now. And, and you've done an incredible job and it's not easy either time to have to go through what we went through. The first time was challenging and tonight was certainly challenging. And I see people looking because I think maybe she did drop off, but she can tune back in. Um, but I, I am proud of her and she handled tonight with great grace. And as one of the members said, really showed, you know, the merits of leadership. So thank you for that, Mayor Pro Tem. Again, you've been a great person to work with and I've learned a lot from you over this last year and I thank you for that. Councilor Gutwin, I just said a bunch of mean things about you when you were off and now you're back.
Internet problems. Surprise, I'm back.
So you'll just have to go back. That's okay. And then, and then just in, in, in final closing thoughts, and many have spoke to it. And it's hard to find the words, right? I, I think as leaders, you are always looking, what do I say? How do I say it? Especially when you watched what unfolded last week in shock. And I was in this office and reached out to Kathy and just said, I don't even know what to say. And, you know, it's through our actions of coming together and continuing to work. And, you know, for some, for me, I'm still angry, right? And one of the visual things that's burned in my head is the Confederate flag running through the rotunda of our nation's Capitol. And to hear Cory Booker talk about that as an African-American senator and how hard and challenging and, and just to see that, so many different emotions on so many different levels. So 2020 was tough. We thought 2021 was going to give us a break. It's going to be a little bit more challenging, but it's what can divide us is the same thing that will unite us. And so that's where we have to find the middle ground, not the, not the outliers on either side. There's the middle folks, the majority, the people that really can come together. And we have a choice right now, a fork in the road, to either soak up what we've seen and decide and say, we're not going to go down that road anymore. We're going to make that change and, and move forward, or we can just not soak it up and continue to do the same thing and live in the same cycle of dysfunction. And, and I have great hope that we're going to take that turn and we're going to, we're going to move forward for the good. And so thank you to all. And, um, it's amazing to see the forethought in the, while very imperfect, our forefathers and what they created have withstood some challenging things. And I think many thought that we might've seen the end coming and it stood right through. And so we got to continue to stand that up and carry on with what they gave us. So thank you for listening to me. And again, I thank you all for your comments tonight. Ms. Hodson, do you have anything?
Only, I just wanted to congratulate the Mayor Pro Tem and I look forward to working with you for another year. So congratulations, Dana.
All right. Mr. Clerk, are you still with us? Oh, yes, there he is. Okay.
I'm here.
From your office?
No, nothing for me. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Graham, anything from the attorney's office? Okay. All right. Well, we are off next week and we'll honor, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King. So, um, I know that there's some folks trying to do some kind of service projects out there. AmeriCorps is. So if you have the opportunity to do, uh, something in Day of Service to honor an incredible leader, that'd be great. And then we'll be back on the 25th and then again, the retreat on the 30th. So we will adjourn this meeting at nine 45 PM. Thank you all very much. Have a good one.